Not me. Yeah, blame it on Bambi.
Okay. Try it again. Okay, try that one. All right. I'd like to call the City of Apa- All right, I'll try it again. I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction Works Center- Work Session, excuse me, of October 20th, 2025 to order and ask everyone to put their cellphones on silent. Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Present.
Councilmember Cross?
Here.
Councilmember Heck?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Present.
Councilmember Soller?
Here.
Do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
Thank you. We got a busy evening going to be go through this. Got, uh, what, twenty-three? Twenty-six, yes, right, twenty-six applicants that we're going to interview. So, uh, I'm going to open it up for the interview to applicants for the annual Boards and Commission appointments. Evy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, so we did receive a total of twenty-six applications. All addresses were verified with our GIS to determine whether they were in city limits or not. As you remember, some of the boards, um, do have seats that don't require citizens to be in Apache Junction limits. Uh, on your large spreadsheet, you will notice the applicants are listed in alphabetical order, and I will call the names out after I finish my little spiel here with you. Under each applicant name is a number, and that represents their order of preference, because some applicants are desirous to serve on more than one board. We do have six incumbents listed, all of which prefer to be on the board they're currently serving. Uh, we do have some seats on the spreadsheet that state currently serving, but they are not expiring, so they would expire next year or the year thereafter. Boards with no expiring terms are Public Safety Retirement and Apache Junction Water District, as well as the Industrial Development Authority. However, the IDA does have three vacancies. Uh, that board has not met since 1989. The Board of Adjustments has two expiring terms and one vacancy. That vacancy will be available, um, I'm sorry, that vacancy expires in 2027. Planning and Zoning has two terms expiring, and they will have a vacancy due to a current member resigning effective October 31st, 2025, and that term actually expires next October. Attempts were made to contact all the applicants. To be present this evening, I believe most are here. Our office did receive, um, direct correspondence from three individuals that I would like to share with you. Daniel Caulfield is, um, on your sheet for a Health and Human Services applicant. He is unable to make it tonight, but he would, uh, be, he's very interested in serving on that board. Myra Garcia is a new applicant. She listed the library as her first preference, however, she is ineligible for that because of not being a city resident, but she is eligible to serve on Health and Human Services. And lastly is Heather Moller. She's an incumbent for both Parks and Recreation and Health and Human Services, and desires greatly to serve on both of those commissions. So with that, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise we can start our process.
Don't see any from this side.
Okay. So the first one on our list is Felicia Acuna.
Mine down.
Robin Barker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Staff. My name is Robin Barker. I currently serve on Planning and Zoning and the Library Board. I would like very much to continue serving on those boards. Questions? Thoughts? It is what it is.
Yep.
Sure.
So there's no question your service to the city over the last few decades. Phenomenal. You know, there's twenty-six applicants.
I understand that.
If we were to kind of, you know, get some new blood in here to, you know, fill some positions, um, you're serving on two and, and applied for another. Is there, I'm assuming the order you have it in, the one, two, and three is the order you would want, um, for these things to be-
Yeah, if you'll tell me what that order is.
Well, I've got-
I've forgotten.
I've got P and Z one, a library two, and Parks and Rec three.
Absolutely.
So if it, if it came down to it, Planning and Zoning would be your top billing?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I sure would like the Library Board. I love it. I do.
So would a lot of others.
I have just come back from making a zen garden at the library, one of the library's programs. They have marvelous programs.
Okay.
Robin, the Parks and Rec, though, that you were not necessarily, you were just looking at-
I put it down, and, and I would be interested if it was open and if there was nobody else who wanted to fill that slot, absolutely. But I'm certainly not going to take somebody else's place.
Okay. Thank you, Robin. Thank you. Thank you for your-
Thanks, Robin.
-service in many different capacities.
Thank you.
As a Vice Mayor, I don't think I have any questions for you. I think you know all the answers.
Oh, thank you, Tess. Can I have that in writing? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
Judy Borey.
Hi, my name is Judy Borey, and I live on Coconino, right across from the library. And the library is one of the boards that I'm interested in. I'm, yeah, I'm currently on that board. And on Park and Rec also. The renewal, I think, is for the Library Board.
That's correct.
Any questions for me?
You're still in, you're still in your term.
Right, right.
So, I mean, I'm going to sound like a broken record here, because for many, many years, we've had applicants just taking positions because we didn't have enough people to fill them. This, I love it, it's changed. We've got a lot of people that want to participate and serve the community. So... I'm just saying, if, if you had, well, you're currently serving on the Parks and Rec Board, but if you were to have a choice of what you, what you really want to do and what you really love.
That's a toughie, because I love both boards too, as Robin, you know, stated also. I read, I'm, I'm a reader, always have been a reader. And, um, but then too, I love the activities of all of our Park and Rec activities, so... And I attend as many different programs as I can with the Library Board and also with, with the Park and Rec. So it would be a toss-up. I mean, you know, if you have, you know, applicants that you want to give them a chance to serve, you know, I'd be willing to step aside and let you do that, so.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Anybody else?
Yes, Your Honor. So currently on the, um, Parks and Rec, your term expires in October of this year or next year?
Next year, I believe.
Okay, so you're really not up for, for that one?
Not for Parks and Rec. No, just, just the Library Board.
Just Library, okay, thank you.
Right, right. Any other questions or... I, I just feel it's important for all of us to kind of give back to our community. It makes it stronger, you know, and, uh, there are a lot of different ways we can all, you know, volunteer. So it just strengthens our community if we do volunteer. So anyway, thanks for letting me serve as long as I've served too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Bright. Not present. Chris Carson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Steve Harshman, President of Apache Junction.
Wait, Harshman or Carson?
I'm sorry, Mr. Harshman, I, I called Chris Carson.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
He jumped, you can't jump the line.
He's eager.
Come back in about twenty minutes.
I don't believe Chris is present, so we'll move on to Shannon Casella. Not present. Daniel Caulfield was the one that I mentioned earlier that is very interested in Health and Human Services, but could not be here tonight. Janet Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, my name is Janet Cooper. I'm a resident of Gold Canyon, so I'm not an Apache Junction resident, but I am a very close neighbor, and we do most of our shopping in Apache Junction. So, um, I am an applicant for the Public Art Commission. Um, I've recently retired from a seventeen-year tenure with Dublin Arts Council in Dublin, Ohio, uh, with a very vibrant, uh, public art program. Uh, my title there at the time of my retirement was Director of Engagement. So, uh, I'm very much committed to community engagement and creating art with the community instead of just for the community. Um, I feel that public art attaches people to their community, and it's an absolute necessity for a vital and growing community such as Apache Junction. It would be a great honor to, to serve here. And may I add, I'm very, very pleased to see that you have a Present for Art program. That's something that we advocated for, for years, and were never able to pass, so congratulations for that. Are there any questions for me?
Yes, Your Honor. Janet, a question, I, I can't pull up your, your information. Did you attend the Citizens Leadership Institute?
I did not. We have, we have just, uh, recently moved back from Ohio, and so I have not attended that.
Okay, all right. And you understand that, no, being a non-resident, there's only currently one opening for a non-resident on the Public Art Commission?
Correct, I did see that, and I do know that it's probably a, a very exciting opportunity for many people. I would say in reviewing the goals of the commission or what the commission does to help support the citizens, um, and council and staff would be, uh, reviewing RFPs from artists. Um, I've done extensive, um, calls to artists on a national capacity. Um, I've trained juries, we've set up criteria, I've used a couple of different platforms for scoring. Um, we actually created the first Public Art Master Plan in the community. So in terms of experience, um, membership of the Public Art Network through Americans for the Arts, those kind of things, I, I would really love to be able to bring some of that experience to the commission where it may be helpful.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else?
Your Honor.
Yeah, I read over your resume, and, you know, you have a, a lot of experience and a lot to bring to the table, so thank you for applying.
Well, thank you. I, it would really be an honor to serve. It's just a passion of mine, um, of, of all the different visual arts experiences that I was fortunate enough to be able to be involved with, with programming. Public art was really the one that hit home for me, and I'd love to be able to share that if, if chosen.
She's an, they've all been answered.
No other questions?
Bambi, Bambi.
Bambi, you want any questions?
Pardon me?
Bambi.
Bambi?
No, so sorry, you guys have been doing, doing a great job of asking the questions, and everybody's been doing a great job of answering those questions, so I'm getting my information.
Great, thank you for your consideration, I appreciate it.
Jeffrey Danford.
No.
I said no.
That was me, Jeff.
Oh, you said no. I know where you live.
Blame it on her.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Jeffrey Danford. I live on Conestoga Road here in Apache Junction. I've been here about fifteen years. I currently serve on two commissions, Public Arts and Health and Human Services. I would like to go back on both of those. However, to get ahead of Mr. Schroder's questions, if push comes to shove, I would prefer Public Arts and let somebody else go on Health and Human Services. Because as you recall, when I went on Health and Human Services the first time, I was drafted by Ms. Nessar there, so, because you had nobody else to fill the spots. Um, I would be willing to give up that spot if I, if I could keep Public Arts. I think we've done a good job on the Public Arts, and I want to continue, continue with the work. We've got some good ideas.
Jeff, having reviewed your, your resume, you've gotten pretty, you're pretty busy. You've got a lot of things on your plate.
I'm retired. I'm old.
Doesn't mean anything.
I'm not that busy.
Well, I know you, you look old, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Heck, I know where you live too.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I've got plenty of time. I'm, we're talking with each of the commissions, it's one night a month, sometimes two nights a month. Um, I've got other things going on, but there are no conflicts with my schedule. And the rest of the time I sit around, look for things to do, so yeah, I got plenty of time.
Okay, good. Well, thank you at least for the offer that you're willing to, willing to-
Yeah, I knew he was going to ask.
Peter?
I probably won't for the rest of the night.
Putting him on boards and commissions?
And I know it's important to get new blood into the commissions, and I am fine with letting somebody else. I've enjoyed my time on Health and Human Services. I would like to stay on it, but I'd also like to see new blood come in, so I'm fine with it. But I would like to stay on, on the Public Arts, if possible.
Peter, keeping him on the boards and commissions keeps Gail from being in prison.
That's true, it does.
Because otherwise she'd kill him. I guarantee you.
Tess has known me a long time, she's probably right. So you'd be saving my life.
All right, so, well, you can type me later then.
Any other questions? Anything else? Not, Bambi, you got anything?
No, Jeff, because I talk to you on a regular basis. So I know that your heart is really in the public art more than it is the human, the Health and Human Services, so I already have that answer from you.
Okay.
Your Honor, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you're, you and your wife have, um, done a lot for the community, especially in the public arts sector, and I know that you've been very well qualified to do the work, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
No, we won't hold against you that you're a Denver Broncos fan, though. We will not hold that against you.
Did you see the game yesterday? We won.
Yes, I did.
Ann Ellis.
Mayor, Council, thank you for inviting all of us tonight. My name is Ann Ellis, and I'm an applicant for the Public Arts Commission. And I've lived in Apache Junction for about twenty-eight years, and I live thirty-three feet outside the city limits on McAlpin's Road. So it's, it's been a long, long road for me trying to, um, get through the, get invited to do the Citizens Leadership Institute. I enjoyed that tremendously, and I feel like now I'm ready to serve on a board or commission, but there's only the two. And for me, I'm a practicing designer and a lifelong artist. I do glass and steel art, and public art to me is something that, it's the way the city expresses to its residents its soul. And it's, it's just a really important thing, and it's, it's something that we need to take very seriously. So, any questions?
Is this something that all or nothing, you wouldn't be interested in any other boards?
I don't think I'm able to serve on other boards because I live just outside the city limits.
There's a couple.
There's a couple, like a Health and Human Services. You could have, be in a zone of influence. Just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can make a quick comment. I served with Ann on the Community Development Corporation, and I appreciate her service to this community, and, uh, I know I'd like to find a spot for you if we can, yeah, because I, I know you're, you've been very dedicated and with that Make a Difference Day, which is a challenge in and of itself, and you've been real good about that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Evans. Not present. Myra Garcia is not here. She's one of the three that I mentioned at the beginning. John Gordon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is John Gordon, and I live in Apache Junction and have for about forty-three years. I didn't actually apply for any specific board or commission, but I have worked on the, um, Board of Adjustments many years ago. So, and basically I just, uh, thought it'd be nice to give back to the community. As far as your resume, I didn't do one of those either. Other than just write one down.
So you're a, John, you're a, you're a real estate broker or associate?
That's correct.
Okay, so, um... I know you said you did the Board of Adjustments. The other, the other boards or commissions, is there, you must have kind of a thought about which you would, if you had a choice or had a preference?
Well, Planning and Zoning, anything that's kind of of the real estate type field is, you know, what I know.
And you did not attend-
Question?
You did not attend the Community Development, I mean, the-
Citizens-
Citizens Leadership Institute.
Uh, no.
Yes, Bambi?
I noticed that on our sheet, you know, there was four, uh, four boards that he had listed. Would you feel comfortable, um, John, with the Board of Adjustment or the, the Construction Board of Appeals? You feel comfortable enough for those positions?
Well, certainly.
I'm kidding, what else? I understand you're an Apache Junction High School graduate.
Yes, sir. Class of eighty-seven.
Thank you.
It's been a minute. Cool.
More reason than me.
Same here, but it's still a long time ago.
A few weeks ago, just a few weeks. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Dave Hanche.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Um, I'm up for reappointment, I believe, on all three boards I serve on right now. Planning and Zoning, municipal property, but I believe that's going away, depending how you guys vote, and Construction Board of Appeals. One I really care about is Planning and Zoning, but I'm happy to serve on any of them. I think you guys, most of you know me. I've been serving now on Planning and Zoning seven years. Leadership, I think I took back in seventeen or eighteen, right in there. It's been a while, I don't remember, but I have graduated it. I'm currently the Chair on Planning and Zoning. And I said I think most of you know me or heard of me anyway, so, any questions?
Yes. More of a statement. I think you're doing a great job on P and Z, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Cross.
Dave, what, how would you, how would you evaluate the role of Chair of the P and Z? And your, how do you feel you've been, it works for you and?
Um, first of most, I think it's an honor, and, you know, I feel appreciated that my fellow members have elected me to it. And I enjoy doing it, and it's, I help, you know, the leadership and everything I bring to the table, I think it makes a difference. But the main strength is the board itself, or the commission itself. And, you know, I'm not special, I just, I was chosen to lead them, and I'm happy to. As a former chair yourself.
Yeah, well, we appreciate, appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Harshman.
Just, just real quick, I know we overrode the P and Z on one, uh, project. How did you handle that?
Say that again?
We overrode you on one of your projects, uh, was a-
You know which one.
Yeah, part of a complex.
You know what, we all have opinions, and I just try and bring the best decision that I can make at any given time. It's not personal. I try and make my best decision that I feel for the city. I put my personal views mainly aside, because that's what we're supposed to do in this position. And I always try and make the best decision I feel for the community. You know, we never see eye to eye on everything with anybody, so you guys, you know, you vote, I vote, and at the end of the day, it's a service we're all providing to the city.
Well, I sat in on one of your meetings, and I thought you did an excellent job as the Chairman. And I know we put you in a hard spot, but like you said, I thought you handled that well. I know there was one person on your board that got mad.
I don't get mad, it's, and I don't even recall which one we differed on. Um, because it's not like I sit there and keep score on any of these votes.
Yes, you do.
No, I really don't.
I, I do want to compliment you, though, I thought you ran a really good board meeting.
I appreciate that, thank you, Councilman Schroder.
What else?
He learned well from me.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, have a great evening.
Tess is taking credit for you, by the way.
He learned well from me.
Steve Harshman.
I think I got it right this time.
Yes, you really did.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Steve Harshman. I'm, uh, currently on four boards and commissions, and one of them's, I think, is going to be dispensable shortly. I would really like to, uh, to fill the vacant seat on the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a very important commission with a heavy workload and, and makes really important recommendations to the board, to the direction that we're going in the city with our building and housing. I have a background in, in, uh, in business and business consulting, where I did a lot of team building, teamwork. I'm, I'm a team player, I know how to, uh, to work with folks. And, and, and I'm honored to be able to serve the city in whatever capacity you all would like for me to serve.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Bambi.
Hi, Bambi.
Hello. So, one of the things that you're not serving on, and I know that you have a good, a good background grasp of how the city functions with its Health and Human Services, and I was a little surprised that you did not apply for that.
I real, honestly, I hadn't thought about that. I'm, I'm open to that, if that's where the real need is. I have done a lot of work with people, and managed a lot of folks, and, uh, done that type of work.
I do notice that you have been following when we go over where the monies go to, that you're very attentive to that when we have those meetings. That's why I wanted to ask you that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a, I'm a financial conservative and, and, uh, I, my mother was an accountant for all of her life, and it kind of rubbed off on me. I, I tend to look at balance sheets and where the money's going before I look at anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thanks, Steve.
Nicholas Kelly.
Hello, Mayor, hello, Councilmembers. My name's Nicholas. Uh, graduated from Apache Junction High School in 2017, so a little bit sooner than probably most of you. Additionally, I, I graduated from the Citizens Institute in 2017 as well. Might be the youngest-
Personally, I've not really looked at all the boards. I did go through them. Planning and zoning was my number one. I think that's the only one I put down as well. If there's an opportunity where you need someone to be, I can be there, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great to hear that. Yeah, and echoing what Councilmember Bambi Johnson was stating is, I think it's admirable that you've stepped up and that you are here to represent some of the newer parts of our city, and that's stuff that we're actually looking for.
Yeah, I'm really glad to do it. I can't tell you how many times where I meet neighbors, and they don't even know they live in Apache Junction. I don't understand how you can sign that many agreements and not know, but I try my best to say, hey, this is Apache Junction, this is Pinell County, not Maricopa. And I just love every single person I can meet and just say, hey, this is great. And one of my favorite things, as you can see, I run the Facebook group, really great time trying to explain to them about the city. All the old people are like, hey, go to Mesa for this. I'm like, have you gone to AJ and tried our food there, tried our restaurants there? And I just try making them come up north instead of heading, you know, east, so.
God bless you.
West.
West, yes.
Your Honor?
Nicholas, didn't we meet you at the first one of the, I think I remember meeting you.
We met a few times, so.
And were you one of the very first?
Second homeowner, fourth, actually, by, second to move in. So I've been there since day one. Water was not, the sewer was not on when I moved in, so. It's definitely an interesting time.
You were still working it.
Yeah, I remember. I was there.
Your Honor? I have a question for you, but it has nothing about this interview.
Sure.
Because you just made a statement that we've discussed, and it's kind of important to understand, about saying, yeah, people down in Radiance live in Apache Junction, live in Pinell County. Can you tell me, about how many people do you think, think they're in Maricopa County?
I met probably about twenty major neighbors on my street the first week I moved in that said, huh? We're in Apache Junction? And to be fair, I won't limit it all on them. There were some zip code issues Dr. Horton had when I first moved in that said eight-five-two-one-two, before it was eight-five-one-two-zero, so, okay, they get a pass there. But, I mean, you pass a sign that says welcome to Apache Junction, for sure. One of my favorite things when that went up, I said, yep, this is my city.
And, but do you think, still, is there still a problem with that, with people thinking that they're in Maricopa County?
I think the owners, no, but I did, on TikTok, people post our new park down there all the time and say how beautiful this is, and people say, this is not in Apache Junction. And I, I do go on Fight For Us, you know, like, this is Apache Junction, it's in Blossom Rock, this is us, this isn't Queen Creek, this isn't Santan, this isn't Mesa, this is Apache Junction.
Good, it's good to hear that. I mean, I'm just, that's been an issue with me of?
Oh, for sure.
That we're doing something to promote to people who are coming in there, that they are part of this city.
Yes.
The one thing you can do for us, and you've already done it, we really don't want to have a North Apache Junction and a South Apache Junction, freeway dividing us. And I'm glad you're down there, because we need help to ensure that everybody understands we are Apache Junction.
That's correct.
We're one, and we need to work together, get amenities down there for the, the new residents, have, have them come up and enjoy our restaurants, because we got great restaurants and great stuff to do. So I'm glad you're down there pushing that, I really am.
Try my best.
Very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Lamont Klepper.
I had a script. I'm not usually good talking in front of groups, but I just kind of want to be myself and explain my background, and I'm a proud resident of Apache Junction. I applied for planning, zoning, parks and rec, adjustments. I feel like that fits my background the best, but I'm happy to serve wherever you might need me. My wife and I moved to Apache Junction on one of the newer buildings, it's kind of surrounded by state trust land, you guys passed it in twenty-eighteen, Superstition Vista, love it out there, it's beautiful. I think it's one of the best things that the city has done recently. If it wasn't for that, I don't know if I would be here. It's that kind of growth that's really made me feel like Apache Junction's home. When I moved to the Valley, my wife and I were trying to find a place to call home. Apache Junction really gave, gave us that feeling. I've been in and out of Apache Junction for years. I'm a huge advocate for the Superstition Mountains, it's my passion. I love being out there every weekend. So being out there, being in the city is kind of a dream of mine. I, I think it's phenomenal. My background, I graduated from Northern Arizona University with a history degree. You're from Northern Arizona?
I did some time up there. Sacred.
It's beautiful, it's beautiful. We, we went from one mountain to another, that was our, that's why we're so happy to be here. So I graduated from there with a history degree, minor in geology, huge interest, emphasis in geography, so that's kind of why I'm so interested in land and development in that area. I currently, my career's in property management. I'm really a huge advocate in that, that realm. I've served on the AMA Government Affairs Board, which is the Arizona Multi-Housing Association. Really good experience there, and now I'm working in property kind of in the Gilbert area. So it's been a really good experience. As far as my passion when it comes to service, I come from a family, and I've married into a family that's really involved in community service. My mother-in-law was the first female mayor of her town, she brings a lot of inspiration to me, so I'm really happy to kind of get involved and be a part of the group. Apache Junction's my home, very passionate to be here, very excited to be here, I'm very excited to be up here, a little nervous, but it's just great to be in front of here. I've watched a lot of the council meetings, so it's good to be in here. See you guys, and I'll be here tomorrow night, so I'm excited. Yeah, that's it. Any questions? I like answering questions, I'm a lot better at that.
No, I, I mean, I appreciate your candidness and, and, you know, speaking from the heart, so.
Yeah, I had the script, because I was like, this is going to be too scripted, I just wanted to be myself, so.
You did just fine.
I appreciate it. Good?
You also said that you may be interested in the third one, which was Board of Adjustments, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, I, I read over the, what they do. I know they only meet a few times if needed, but, again, I'm just happy to serve and be a part of my community, and I'm hoping, as my career grows and as my time in Apache Junction grows for the near future, I can continue to be more and more involved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson, Vice Mayor Schroeder, Councilmembers and staff. My name is Elisa Kraselik, and I come before you this evening seeking a position on the Planning and Zoning Committee. I'm very excited to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about why I think I would be a good fit for this committee. I'm very active in the community. I currently serve on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, and I've always believed in the philosophy of being bigger than just yourself. And the planning and zoning appeals to me because I came to Apache Junction in twenty-seventeen because I love this community. I'm very passionate about a small-town, big-city feel combined as one. The growth that this city has seen, a lot of the things have been approved, being able to see some of the larger manufacturing coming in, you know, whatever your political views are, nobody can deny that American-made is a direction that many people are seeking. And to be able to see things like WW Clyde come in, Sunt Constructions, being able to bring in not just the balance of business, but the balance of residential. My son's girlfriend just bought a house, and she was so excited, she spent only four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars right here at Apache Junction. I'm like, yes, we have a community that is growing, and it's attracting people that have better incomes, we're providing more jobs for them, and I want to be a part of that growth. You know, I chose to come here, I'm not from Arizona, I didn't graduate in twenty-seventeen from high school, I moved here in twenty-seventeen, and it's because I wanted to be in a community that I can be a part of seeing continue to grow and be better and better, help set the future for those that are much younger than me to be a part of that foundation.
Mayor?
Yes?
First off, we know each other, we've had a lot of dealings together, you do a wonderful job over at the Chamber. I really appreciate that. Are there any other boards that you'd be willing to look at?
Absolutely. We live in a world that you have to be flexible, you have to be considerate of other opportunities. I did put down planning and zoning, but I would absolutely be consider any other board.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate your service through the Chamber for them.
You're very welcome, it's my pleasure. I, I run three funeral homes, and one is a cemetery, two crematories here in Mesa, Apache Junction, and Queen Creek. And one of the things I've learned is patience, being able to listen, being able to be understanding of people in difficult times. And when you're on a committee, that is, to me, a big part of the success of a committee, is being respectful to those that are on the committee with you, and listening and understanding all points of views. You know, what you might think or feel is the best and only way is not true. There's sometimes better opportunities of what others might bring to the table, and I think I'm an excellent listener, and I'm a good person to make compromise, and being willing to go on another board is just one of many examples of that. Any other questions?
Yeah. According to Peter, Jeff might need your services here. No, you're, you're, you're very well spoken, and definitely appreciate your service to our community, and, and, you know, we'll see what happens, but I'm, I'm happy to, to know that you are willing to look at other positions.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I also want to say, Elisa and I, we work together, well, more or less, with the Memorial Day Veterans Service at, at the Mountain View Funeral Home, and she does a phenomenal job every year remembering our, our fallen veterans, and that means a lot to a lot of people, and I don't know that it would come together as well if it weren't for you at the, at the lead on that. So I, thank you very much.
And I appreciate you mentioning that, Councilmember. Heck, because one of the things also I love about Apache Junction is the support of our veterans, and a lot of people don't understand what PTSD does and how it affects people, and this is a community that embraces and reaches out to our veterans, all in the East Valley community, and I have a very heavy heart for that because I lost my brother to PTSD, and I feel that people need to be heard and understood. Even when you don't, sometimes just a warm smile and a hug goes a long way.
I believe that I have probably known you for probably close to ten years through the VFWs and all the things between there and the, you know, the, the Chamber, so I don't think that there's any board that we have that you would not be a great asset to.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
I have to thank that as well, and I sure appreciate what you do. Very thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson.
No one else has anything? Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you all.
Jaime Lanza.
Mayor, board members, my name is Jaime Lanza, and again, I would like to continue to participate in this board, the Arts Commission. One of the reasons is, this board completed pretty good projects, and we received very positive comments. So one of those reasons I would like to continue. I would like also to, you consider my name again for this board. I guess that's all I got, unless you got any questions for me.
Jaime, I know that you've been on the commissions for several years, and thank you very much for doing that, and, you know, yes, you guys have made a big difference in our Arts Commission, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate that.
Anyone else have?
I want to say a special thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Esther McGrath.
Good evening. My name is Esther McGrath, and I am a resident here at Apache Junction. I attended the Citizen Leadership Institute this year. That was when I decided I wanted to apply to be on the board for the Planning and Zoning. I think I could bring a lot of value to that board specifically because I do have experience as a contractor. My husband and I own a business providing water restoration and mold removal services. Excuse me, and, just one second. Excuse you, my allergies are acting up. So, we have been in the industry for a while now. I work with a lot of homeowners in Apache Junction and business owners as well who have experienced an emergency water damage situation where we're able to help them. We have lived in Apache Junction for about four years, but I was born and raised in East Mesa, so I've seen how far Apache Junction has came, and I'm really proud of it. I love being here, surrounded by the mountains, and I would love to be a part of the community in any way I could bring value. Like I said, I really enjoyed learning about all the new things that are coming about in our community with, through the leadership program, and just by attending some of the meetings this last year, and I'm just looking forward to still attending the meetings when I can, and just being a part of the community wherever I may fit. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
All right.
Good, good resume. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lori Medina.
Hello. Hello, Mayor. Can you guys hear me? Okay. My name's Lori Medina. I actually, I think I applied just for the Arts Council, but, or Commission, but I might have applied for the other ones, but I'm open to serve. I recently graduated from the Citizen Leadership Institute, and it's kind of interesting because I didn't want to apply for any of these boards, but there was something that just kept coming in my face. Gina would email me, someone would tell me to do it, and it's actually kind of a fear of mine to be in front of you guys. But I'm a natural leader, so it's kind of funny, when I was coaching my son in basketball, and I was terrified, he said, Mom, all you have to do is blow the whistle. And then I became the coach. But I have an extensive background in community leadership, ranging from organizing events for groups as large as five thousand people, to just recently running library events this summer. We did it once a month at the library, we did a Reiki healing circle, and we had a huge turnout, and it was fantastic. And it was just using your imagination and sending so much love and light into our city, and expanding it out, and unifying it. I lead with my heart, I'm very sensitive, but I love people, that's one thing I know. But if you have any questions, I have a huge background in literary arts, I own a publishing company, worked with a lot of visual artists in my magazine. And I would love to be a part of the community in any way I could bring value. Like I said, I really enjoyed learning about all the new things that are coming about in our community with, through the leadership program and just by attending some of the meetings this last year. And I'm just looking forward to still attending the meetings when I can and just being a part of the community wherever I may fit. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
All right.
Good, good resume.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lori Medina.
Hello, Mayor. Can you guys hear me? Okay. My name's Lori Medina. I actually, I think I applied just for the Arts Council but or Commission, but I might have applied for the other ones. But I'm open to serve. I recently graduated from the Citizen Leadership Institute. And it's kind of interesting because I didn't want to apply for any of these boards, but there was something that just kept coming in my face. Gina would email me, someone would tell me to do it. And it's actually kind of a fear of mine to be in front of you guys. But I'm a natural leader, so it's kind of funny. When I was coaching my son in basketball and I was terrified, he said, Mom, all you have to do is blow the whistle. And then I became the coach. But I have an extensive background in community leadership, ranging from organizing events for groups as large as 5,000 people to just recently running library events this summer. We did it once a month at the library. We did a Reiki Healing Circle, and we had a huge turnout, and it was fantastic. And it was just using your imagination and sending so much love and light into our city and expanding it out and unifying it. I lead with my heart. I'm very sensitive, but I love people. That's one thing I know. But if you have any questions, I have a huge background in literary arts and a publishing company. Worked a lot of visual artists in my magazine company. I love art, but I love people.
Anyone else have questions?
Your Honor.
Yes.
So you are willing to serve on other boards?
Yes, now that I'm here and I I realize that you can serve in any any board, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Catherine Meek.
Catherine Meek, Mayor, Council. Brief history lesson. Three years ago, I was sitting in the city council meeting, and you were searching for bodies to fill positions. So after that, I joined CLI, took the classes, threw my hat in the ring, and I am currently on my second year, entering my third years on the Library Board and the Public Arts Commission. Last year, I was told, oh, there's plenty of applicants. You have no problem. So I'm also on a board. I'm not sure which board it is. It hasn't met for quite a few years because you were searching for people to be on the board. This year, I figured I wouldn't take a chance that tomorrow night's meeting is going to be extra long, searching for bodies. So I threw my hat in the ring again. If you need a body, I'm willing to serve wherever it's needed. Any questions?
Yeah, the one board was the IDA, Industrial Development Authority, but.
I'm already on it.
No need to, yeah, you are. You are on that board, yeah.
She put in for the MPC.
Catherine.
Yes, sir.
I know that you come to a lot of our, just about all of our council meetings. And so you're quite versed and knowledgeable on the happenings of our of our community and our commissions. And, yeah, we can slide you in anywhere we need, and you'd do fantastic for us.
I will do my research and learn what's needed. Thank you.
I'll second that. You're always here. You're always involved. You know, you do your museum out there. So thank you very much for your service, and thank you for being open to other areas.
Well, I'm delighted to be here to be able to serve, so.
So you're, but your your terms aren't over yet.
No, they're not.
Right, okay, yeah, so you're, we'll be adding to your schedule for more, okay.
Yeah, as long as it's not a Tuesday night that interferes with city council, I'm really fine.
Where's your shadow?
He does not come to these because he wants to be out on the outskirts causing trouble.
Yeah, okay.
Good to know.
His best position, trouble. Anything else?
Okay.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you, Catherine.
Next on our list is Heather Moller. She is not here tonight, but she was one of the three that I mentioned when we started our meeting. Moving on to Dwan Montgomery.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dwan Tenille Montgomery. I go by Tenille. I want to serve on the Health and Human Services Board as well as the Police Retirement. I, my undergraduate is in criminal justice. I have been a police officer in the city of Charleston, in Charleston, South Carolina. I have been an adult probation officer in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I've also worked in juvenile detention in the state of Delaware. Currently, I work as a U M Director for Viola Linda Behavioral Health out in Scottsdale. Prior to that, I worked for Humana, and I worked with the TRICARE account in which I did utilization management for active-duty service members and their families. I have always worked with people or people in the criminal justice system or people in mental health. So I think those two boards would be most fitting for myself. I currently live, and we just moved out, my husband and I, we just moved out to Blossom Rock off of Ironwood and Ray. And if you have not been there, please drive through. It is spectacular. But those two boards, I think, would probably be best suited for me. Does anybody have any questions?
Your Honor, just a statement, Dwan. Do you realize that on the Police Retirement, there is no positions open?
Okay, okay.
You applied for it, but there's.
None currently.
It says there's no current opening, just so you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, I'm a licensed professional counselor for almost 20 years. I am licensed in the state of Arizona, not for that long, but I'm also licensed in the state of North Carolina.
Thank you for your service. I know the police department's always looking for help, too. You might be able to help them out. You got a lot of experience.
That's a young girl's game. Oh, my God.
No, I know, because because I'm coming up on my retirement from being a lieutenant over in Mesa, so.
Okay, okay, right on.
Thirty-seven years.
I was an 18-year volunteer with our police department. I worked on Fridays with the, up in CID. You can always volunteer. You don't have to do police work outside in in there. So if you ever want to do something like that with your knowledge and background.
Yes.
It might not be like one of these boards and commissions, but you'd actually be working in the office, so.
How nice.
I don't know, she can.
Because I like, I like law enforcement.
We actually know.
I like being in their realm. Love it.
We actually know the police chief, so we might be able to put a good word in for you.
The chief. See that man right over there?
I see him, I see him.
Well, you go ask him if he needs you as a volunteer.
Right on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Manny Vega.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Manny Vega, I've been a resident of Apache Junction for about four years now, native of Arizona. Interested in the Parks and Recreation Board, huge sports background. My undergrad is in Sports and Recreation Management. Before that, I worked at the, was a program director at the YMCA and just love going out into community volunteering. Last 15 years or so, I've been part of the corporate world, currently a sales manager at a Fortune 500 company, and just looking to, you know, expand my my knowledge, my leadership. And, you know, from afar, I see lots of things happening in Apache Junction with Parks and Rec, and just feel like I can have a positive impact, so.
Any questions?
Are you interested in any other positions? Parks and Rec doesn't become available.
Yeah, I think, open to discussion, but I think Parks and Rec is right in my alley.
Sure, okay. Thank you, thank you for at least considering.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Alexandra Wiroba.
Mayor, council members, my name's Alexandra Wiroba, and I'm interested in serving on the Library Board. I am actually a nonprofit professional, so I've had nonprofit experience for over seven years, working at the Arizona State University Foundation as well as the YMCA in working in donor relations and stewardship. And I actually also participated in the Arizona Valley Leadership Catalyze Program. And with that, I learned, learned a lot about the different problems and challenges that the overall, the valley overall faces, the the state. But locally, being a resident of Apache Junction for officially three years, but I've been in and out of the city with my dad living here since 2008. So really interested in participating and volunteering to support the library in particular, especially as it's a a great resource for the community and a space and not only a welcoming environment, but interested in serving not only from educational purposes for the community, but also just that space for multiple, multiple generations. So interested in in that position.
Okay, any questions?
Very impressive resume.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's it's well put together and a lot of, you've got a lot of stuff under your belt.
Yeah.
It was impressive.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I want to say thank you.
I appreciate all your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was the last one.
Okay.
Got any questions from the council?
Can we get, is there a checklist of specifically how many positions are open for each board?
It's right there at the top.
That's great list. Just right there. Okay.
We can put something together for you.
Okay, and then that, one other thing that we talked about regarding the one commission that's going to be done away with.
The MPC.
MPC, yeah.
So that member that applied for that board was not here this evening. We did try and connect with her, and we called and left voicemails and emails, and no response.
And Evy, remind me, that item on the agenda tomorrow was first and then the selection.
That is correct.
Okay. And then we can make a new chart, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Evy.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. And this is for all the applicants that came into the room tonight. You know, a couple of people said they were nervous, and, you know, I know my first time that I walked in and applied for a board is very nerve-wracking. Every single person who stepped forward, whether they showed up tonight or not, took a step forward for their city, and we all appreciate that because this is the future leaders. Later on down the road, a lot of these people will end up getting more and more involved and helping our city grow. So I applaud all the people that are in that room that were able to come in there tonight and step forward for their city betterment.
Mayor. I second that. I think, I want to thank everybody who's here for taking time out to step up and help us out and help us with the city. Our city's growing, as you know. It's getting bigger, and we have two new communities down south. So thank you for stepping up, and thank you for taking on these challenges.
They stole my my final statement. I definitely want to say thank you all for putting in your applications and even considering taking additional boards or, you know, in the aspect on it. It's great that we have a group of people that, you know, are willing to step forward, to assist, to use their knowledge to assist our community as we grow. You know, Apache Junction has just been recognized as a volunteer city, and this proves it more in the aspects on it, is what we do. One of the things I can say I'm very proud of of my entire time that I have been involved prior to, even when I came on to council over, well, now, almost 18 years ago, is something that I've been proud of is the number of people that step forward that are willing to help with their time and their efforts to keep the city growing forward. So again, I personally want to say a special thank you. With that, I'll adjourn this meeting.